So, uh, thank you for everybody for coming. Um, this is in regards to the alleged fraud. Criminal fraud took place in this, uh, primary election in the city of Warren on Tuesday, the eighth of August, two thousand twenty-three, uh, particularly in the fifth council district in the city of Warren. So I have filed a criminal complaint for damages, uh, superintending control order and injunctive relief initially with the thirty-seventh District Court. I was advised by that court that the amount, uh, that I'm requesting in damages exceeds the limit of the court, which was twenty-five thousand, uh, so that had to be moved, uh, into the sixteenth Judicial Circuit Court, which is McComb County. The amount of the damages, um, is approximately one hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents, or the equivalent of being four years in the upcoming council, given the adjustment for the increase in pay for the council members for the next four years that was approved, um, by the commission that approves for the pay increases for the council members and also the other elected officials in the city of Warren. Uh, that does not include the court costs, uh, the filing fees and, uh, for having to provide service upon the candidates, uh, the Warren Election Commission and that also of the city of Warren clerk. Uh, so to go over this real quick, uh, the order that's being appealed is the order of the City of Warren Election Commission that was made on the twenty-sixth of May when they indicated that they would not handle any challenge, uh, hearings to candidates that would be on the, uh, Tuesday, eighth August, two thousand twenty-three primary ballot. This civil complaint for damages, superintending control order and injunctive relief is timely and is taken within twenty days of the unofficial, uh, results of the primary election updated on Wednesday, the ninth of August, two thousand twenty-three at zero nine thirty-seven hours A.M. Uh, as the plaintiff appellant, which is me, is aggrieved by the final decision and order of the tribunal body on Friday, the twenty-sixth of May, two thousand twenty-three. Appeals the decision and order by, to the district court by filing this petition and an order of superintending control within twenty days from the date of the primary election. As I said, this had to be changed from the district court over to the circuit court because of the money damages involved. Um, this has to do with several points, um, in the order being appealed. Uh, there is no alternative recourse to challenge the tribunal's, uh, body's decision and this is the only adequate remedy to compel the district court, or in this case now the circuit court, to take action or make a decision. So the allegations of error. This case presents an issue of first impressions involving interpretation and application of the city charter of Warren, uh, sections primarily, uh, seven point one-one, uh, Department of the City Clerk, uh, sections number seven and nine on page forty and city charter, uh, charter of Warren, section thirteen point one-one, Election Commission duties, page eighty-five and section thirteen point one-two, meeting and quorum, page eighty-five and section thirteen point one-five, general powers and duties, page eighty-six and, uh, section seven on page eighty-seven and section two point six, penalties for violation of the charter on page eleven. The defendants, appellees, the city of Warren clerk and the city of Warren Election Commission, misapplied in the reviewing of the city of Warren charter sections at their personal discretion inconsistent with the controlling precedent of the city charter of Warren. Defendants, appellees, city of Warren, city of clerk and city of Warren Election Commission, number one, failed to comply with the controlling city of charter of Warren precedent. Now, the charter I'm referring to is this little red book here. Basically, this is the bible in the city of Warren of everything that is supposed to be done in city government. Everything that the council is supposed to do, everything that city clerk, the different commissions, the mayor and the treasurer. This applies to everything in the city of Warren. This is our constitution and we're supposed to follow it. This has to do also with our elections. This is for a municipal election and this book decides who is eligible and who is qualified to run for elections in the city of Warren. The state constitution also provides for remedies for those that are felons in the state of Michigan that had their convictions over twenty years, they are allowed to be on the ballot, anybody under twenty years, they're not allowed to be on the ballot. So that's consistent also with the state law, not only with only our charter. They failed to make complaint and to prosecute any person whom the commission shall, and that's an important word, shall. That is used readily here in every piece of legislation in the state of Michigan, shall. Does not allow for discretion. It means you have to do this. It shall be done. Have good cause to believe that has been guilty of a violation of the election laws. So if you're an ineligible and unqualified candidate, you violated the election laws in the city of Warren. If you have not done your job as an elected official, i.e. the clerk and the election commission on the city of Warren, you've also violated election laws. If you signed a statement of attestation saying that you are an eligible and qualified candidate to be on the ballot, you have indeed said that you are truly a eligible and qualified candidate, even if you're ineligible and unqualified and you violated election laws. Signed a statement of attestation, that statement of attestation has a penalty of perjury, it's a felony. In the state of Michigan, it's a felony, it's a one thousand dollar fine and it's five years imprisonment. They failed to take action upon timely and lawfully submitted corresponding evidence obtained by myself and independently verified from an online private investigation firm, checkpeople.com, that conducts background checks utilizing criminal and public record database sources. So checkpeople.com, not only does investigations for background and criminal checks, but they also are readily used by employers to make sure that they have a qualified candidate for employment that doesn't have a criminal record and also to verify whether or not, uh, they have any other, uh, gigs that would not allow them to be employed for an employer. Um, other municipalities use them as well. It's readily available on their website that they're highly rated and their information that they obtain is beyond reproach. They failed to remove candidates Henry Noonan, Brittany Tringali and J. Michael Jackson, all as ineligible and unqualified from the Tuesday, eighth August, two thousand twenty-three primary election ballot in the city of Warren. They failed to certify that as the plaintiff appellant, Eddie Kabisinski, has the only remaining candidate that was eligible and qualified per the city charter of Warren, chapter four, officers, section four point two, eligibility for city office, general qualifications, page nineteen and section four point three, A and B, certain persons ineligible for city office, page nineteen, for the council in the fifth district in the city of Warren. Again, referring to eligibility and qualifications in the city charter. This is what our elections are based on, the city charter. They failed to enforce the city charter. They failed to do the duties of the city charter. This is for a municipal election. Every one of these council positions is a municipal election. The clerk is a municipal election, the treasurer is a municipal election and so is the mayor. The state might have other requirements for eligibility and qualifications for other offices at the county and state level, but our charter, our bible, our constitution for the city says what our rules and regulations are for our elected officials. And every one of these candidates that was on the ballot for the fifth district was ineligible and not qualified. The three individuals I just named here were the ones that surpassed on the ballot in this recent election. So that means that I would win the election with three hundred and fifty-nine votes as the only eligible candidate, that's exactly what that means, because the other three candidates are ineligible and they're not qualified to be on the ballot. They should have never been allowed to have been voted upon, but because the clerk and the Warren Election Commission failed to do their plenary power job, that's what this is all about. They had the plenary power to do, conduct the investigation, to prosecute, and they did not do that. They failed in their job. They violated my right to have a legal opportunity for a public hearing concerning the candidate challenges was not afforded and they canceled the hearings for the ineligible and unqualified candidate challenges. So I was not the only one that brought up candidate challenges. There were other candidates, other elected officials in the city of Warren that requested hearings, that presented evidence to not only the clerk but the Warren Election Commission. Now, in this case, as I had indicated on my letter of the Tuesday, the twenty-third of May, two thousand twenty-three, in this case, Mr. Ethan Vincent is a city attorney. He is also a member of the city election commission. The evidence intake attorney would have been Mary Michaels, the deputy city attorney, and she was provided with copies of the evidence. Now, concerning another candidate, uh, which the information was redacted and is not part of this lawsuit, the information had to go directly to the city attorney's office because, according to checkpeople.com, they could only give that information to a licensed attorney and not to myself. That information was sent to the city attorney's office, both of Mr. Vincent and Ms. Michaels via email, and it was unredacted concerning another candidate, which is not a part of this lawsuit. So I did everything proper and correct per our city charter as a result of challenging these candidates. Problem here is there are those in the administration, in city elected office, did not do their job according to the charter. And that's what this lawsuit is about and allowed a fraud to be perpetrated upon the good and decent people of the fifth council district and possibly other council districts within the city of Warren having to do with other elections. I'm primarily concerned about the election in which I was in. I want to go on with, um, the results of the election. On Wednesday, the ninth of August, two thousand twenty-three, at zero nine thirty-seven hours A.M., the unofficial results of the primary election updated for the fifth district council in the city of Warren with candidate Henry Noonan in the first place, candidate Brittany Tringali in second place, candidate J. Michael Jackson in third place and myself in fourth place. This action constitutes a criminal fraud that has been perpetrated upon the good and decent people of the fifth council district for the city of Warren, having ineligible and unqualified candidates voted upon in the primary ballot. Now I will go into exactly why this, uh, item has been brought to the court. So on Tuesday, the thirtieth of May, two thousand twenty-three, the, I filed a criminal complaint report, number twenty-three, zero, zero, two, nine, seven, five, seven, with the city of Warren Department of Police at approximately fourteen, twenty-nine hours P.M. as a result of the criminal actions by the defendant appellate, city of Warren clerk, for the city charter, uh, city of Warren, section, uh, seven point one-one, Department of City Clerk, seven and nine, page forty, city charter of Warren, sections thirteen point one-one, Election Commission duties, page eighty-five and section thirteen point one-two, meeting and quorum, page eighty-five and section thirteen point one-five, general powers and duties, section number three on page eighty-six and section seven on page eighty-seven, and the city of, uh, charter of Warren, chapter number four, officers, section four point three, A, certain persons ineligible for city office on page nineteen, and violated the city charter of Warren for these actions, which penalties are provided for in section two point six, page eleven. Defendant appellate, the city of Warren clerk, also violated MCL seven fifty point five oh five and signed the statement of attestation concerning the affidavit and identity and receipt of filing, section number three, certification and acknowledgement. By, by signing, I acknowledged that making a false statement in this affidavit is perjury, a felony punishable by up to a fine of one thousand dollars or imprisonment for five years and may result in disqualification from the ballot. So how does this apply to Ms. Bufer? Well, Ms. Bufer violated election laws. She did not do her job as the city clerk. She also did not do her job as the chairman of the Warren Election Commission. She did not investigate, she did not prosecute ineligible and unqualified candidates on this ballot. It specifically says shall. That means she has to do it. She can't think about, can't say, no, I'll think about and see if I want to do it, or I'm going to use discretion. No, it says shall. Something you have to do. They canceled the hearings for the ineligible and unqualified candidate challenges, even though it says shall. I issued the letter of memorandum, as I said, on the twenty-third of May in regards to this. I submitted the timely issued evidence. They ignored it. They didn't respond in any way, shape or form to my letter. They did not have any scheduled hearings and decided to cancel any further hearings and conduct any investigation and prosecute anybody for being ineligible and unqualified on this ballot. In regards to Mr. Noonan, he also signed a statement of attestation. I'm not going to reread that, I read it once. How does this apply? How is he unqualified? How is he not an eligible candidate? On Thursday, the sixth of April, two thousand twenty-three, public records search provides that the twenty-seven, one, five, six Gale Drive, Warren, McComb County, Michigan, four eight, zero, nine, three address for the defendant appellate, candidate Henry Lawrence Noonan residency ceased. Public records search provides that the twenty-seven, one, five, six Gale Drive, Warren, McComb County, Michigan, four eight, zero, nine, three address was a personal a- asset sold for ninety-three thousand, one hundred dollars. The birthdate was listed as the eighteenth of September, nineteen fifty-six. That confirms that it was Mr. Noonan because that's the date of birth that he put on his statement of attestation, statement of identity to run for election in the city of Warren. So that confirms that this sale was per him, per the birthday. Public records search provides that the defendant appellate candidate Henry Lawrence Noonan, primary homestead property tax residency is for an address of eleven, twenty-eight North Blair Avenue, Royal Oak, Oakland County, Michigan, four eight, zero, six, seven as a current residency. If you live in Royal Oak, if you live in Oakland County, not a Warren resident, that's pretty plain to see. Now, there might be a stipulation and it says you must be an elector within the city of Warren for at least the last two years. Well, that's fine, but if Mr. Noonan is given this position, he also has to be removed from it once he is given it because he no longer has residency within the fifth council district. So in either case, either residency or now he's moved after he was duly elected, he can't hold the position because he doesn't live in Warren, it's not his primary residence. The Blair Drive address, per the information of checkpeople.com, which is, what is it you usually call it? Competent authority? They are competent authority. That's Fred's word, he likes that, likes that phrase. So let's go on here to, um, Ms. Brittany. And I only say the, the name Ms. Brittany because of the twenty different aliases that are assigned to this young woman. I'll get into that later. So on, uh, Thursday, the twentieth of April, two thousand twenty-three, defendant appellate candidate Brittany Nicole Tringali is the current name she's using right now, signed a statement of attestation concerning section three, certification and acknowledgement. Again, I'm not going to reread that, but making a false statement, saying that you're ineligible and qualified candidate is a violation of election laws, is a felony punishable by up to a thousand dollar fine and five years imprisonment. Another felony for Ms. Brittany. She can add that to the collection. So, uh, a public records search for defendant appellate candidate Brittany Nicole Tringali finds for felony criminal convictions in the state of Michigan under the alias of Brittany Kilimzak, I hope I'm saying that correct, Brittany Kilimzak, K.L.I.M.C.Z.A.K., for felony assaulting, resisting, obstructing a police officer with a weapon attempted on the ninth of February twenty seventeen, felony retail fraud, second degree, over two hundred dollars on the twenty-fourth of January, two thousand seventeen, and for MCL three, three, three point seven, two, one, four, narcotic drugs, public health code, public act three sixty-eight of nineteen seventy-eight, and MCL seven fifty point four, four, eight through MCL seven fifty point four, four, nine, eight, prostitution in the city of Detroit, county of Wayne, third judicial court case numbers, uh, twenty seventeen hyphen zero, zero, one, one, zero, six, dash, zero, one, F.H., two thousand seventeen hyphen zero, zero, one, one, zero, six, dash, zero, two, F.H. and two thousand seventeen, zero, zero, one, one, zero, six, hyphen, zero, three, F.H. All felonies under twenty years, two thousand seventeen, right? So if it was any criminal conviction since twenty oh three would be considered, since we're in two thousand twenty-three, that would be the cutoff. Anything older than two thousand and three cannot be considered. So we can all agree that two thousand seventeen is within that time period of two thousand and three and two thousand twenty-three. Public records search also of, uh, Ms. Tringali provides for additional criminal convictions in the state of North Carolina under the alias of Brittany Lane for public health crimes, that's what they call it, public health crimes, involving narcotics or prostitution on the following dates, nine October, two thousand fifteen, twenty-nine September of two thousand twelve, first of June, two thousand twelve, and the twenty-fourth of January, two thousand I'm sorry. And, uh, let's go on here to, uh, state of Virginia. Same thing, public health crimes involving narcotics and prostitution on the twenty-third of May, two thousand nineteen, seventh of May, two thousand nineteen, nineteenth of September, two thousand and seven, and the fifteenth of September, two thousand and seven. Now, as I said, there were many aliases, uh, for, uh, Ms. Brittany here. All of them have to do with the last name of Tringali, uh, Tringali, Kilimzak, Kilimzak, uh, Tringali, um, variations on the Kilimzak spelling, uh, missing letters here and there. Uh, and also hyphenated, uh, with the Mills name and also the Lane surname attached. I have those documents, um, I have submitted them to certain media groups, anybody that wants to see that, I have that available here in hard copy. Um, it was submitted with the evidence to the court, so you can look up the court document as well and, uh, it'll show all the evidence that I've supplied. There is also a question of residency. So a rental property, not somebody that lives in a rental property, but a property that you use to collect rent from, a rental property, that cannot be used as your primary residence in the city of Warren. It's not your primary residence, you're, you're using it as a business, you're using it to make a profit, you're using it as a source of income. Public records search of the defendant appellate, uh, Brittany Nicole Tringali provides the prop, the primary homestead property tax for a rental property with an address of eighty-two, twenty-two Stanley Drive, Warren in McComb County, Michigan, four eight, zero, nine, three, from October of two thousand twenty to current, for a Melissa McKenzie and a Michael McKenzie. Public records search provides for an out-of-state residency, though, at nine fifty Bob Arnold Boulevard, Lithia Springs, Douglas County, Georgia, thirty-one, two, two, from January of two thousand twenty-one. Well, geez, um, if you live there in October of two thousand twenty, how can you also live in Georgia at the same time, uh, January of two thousand twenty-one? Somebody's not telling the truth somewhere. So if that is the case and the actual residency shows from January of two thousand twenty-one, there would have not been two years of residency within the city of Warren. Furthermore, her voting records indicate that she lives in district two, Ward two, for the voting records. So in this last election, did Ms. Brittany vote in district two or did she vote in district five? That's another question. And I know that to be current because the voting record was updated to notate the change between the tenth congressional district and the ninth congressional district. Everybody knows that we went through redistricting here in the state of Michigan and this area used to be the ninth congressional district under Andy Levin. And now, since the redistricting, it's changed to the tenth congressional district and John James is the new congressperson. So that means that her voting records were updated to indicate the tenth congressional district from voterrecords.com and indicates her address in being in, uh, district two, Ward two, as of two thousand seventeen. I also want to go on here to an item that's very disturbing. On Tuesday, the eighth of August, two thousand twenty-three, brighter pack, brighter Michigan PAC, Chairman Erica Steglia and the chairman of the, quote, Republican Party of McComb County text messages voters, uh, stating the following, quote, "Today is primary election day in Warren and it is vital that conservatives have their voices heard. There are candidates to support, George Demas for mayor, Dave Dwyer and Donna Ku Martin, council at large, Adam Swaka, council district two, Dan Bozak, council district three, Gary Boyke, council district four, and Brittany Tringali, council district five. Polls are open until eight P.M. Get out and vote." Paid for brighter Michigan PAC and then their website. So the Republican Party is the party of Trump. President Trump does not endorse any candidate having to do with drugs in any way, shape or form. Marijuana medical, marijuana recreational, psychedelic mushrooms, any of that, none of it. The party of Trump also does not endorse prostitution in any way, shape or form. And the party of Trump also does not endorse any beating up on any police officer whatsoever, any assaulting, battering, resisting, obstructing, especially with a weapon? No, absolutely not. So there's no way that this individual is a conservative and Erica Steglia represents the never-Trumper Rhino establishment class of the Republican Party. That is not a conservative, but I'll go into that more later. And finally, we have candidate J. Michael Jackson. He signed the same, same statement of attestation, making a false claim that he was eligible and qualified for this election. Well, let's go into why he's not eligible. Uh, everybody should know in the city of Warren that J. Michael Jackson is on the Warren Crime Commission. He is a city officer. He serves as the sergeant of arms for that commission. He never resigned from that commission prior to running for this election. Now I will go into why that- Now I will go into why that's important later. J. Michael Jackson also has city employment. You cannot be employed by the city at the time that you file for election. There's a conflict of interest for obvious reasons. He serves as a police chaplain, so he's employed by the police department. So you got two gigs against you. And it specifically says that in the charter. Didn't read the charter. 4.3, Certain Persons Ineligible for City Office. Indicates on there, cannot be a city officer, cannot have city employment, to be eligible for office. Now, I said I was going to go into, why is that important? Well, in the last council election that took place approximately four years ago, there was a candidate that served on the planning commission. This candidate stepped down from his position to be a write-in candidate to go against another candidate in District 4. When he did not obtain that position in the election as a write-in candidate, he was then allowed to go back onto his position on the planning commission. That is the proper way to run for office. You resign from your position on a board or a commission, and then if you do not obtain that position through the election, you can go back to that position, provided, in this case, the mayor would have to reappoint you into that position. And that's exactly what happened. Now that individual no longer serves on the board or commission, and he's, to my knowledge, he's no longer in the city of Warren due to employment reasons. But that's the way it should have been done. So J. Michael Jackson did not step down from the Warren Crime Commission, and he also did not step down from being a police chaplain in the city of Warren, which would be city employment, which is prohibited under the charter. So let's get into the nature of this action. This action is brought pursuant to MCL 125.542, seeking writ of superintending control to the city of Warren Election Commission, to a) ordering them to remove candidate Henry Noonan, candidate Brittany Tringali, and candidate J. Michael Jackson as all ineligible and unqualified from the votes cast on Tuesday, 8 August, 2023, primary election ballot results in the city of Warren, and b) ordering defendant appellees, city of Warren Election Commission, to certify that plaintiff appellate, Eddie Kabisinski, as the only remaining candidate that is eligible and qualified per the city charter of Warren, Chapter 4, Officers, Section 4.2, Eligibility for City Office, General Qualifications, Page 19, and Section 4.3a and b Certain Persons Ineligible for City Office, Page 19, for the council in the 5th District in the city of Warren. Again, this is having to do with eligibility and qualified per the city charter, our Bible, our constitution, not for any other reason. We're not saying that these individuals are bad people. We're not trying to say that they're anything else other than ineligible and unqualified to have been on this ballot and to hold elected office in the city of Warren. Now, they may be able to run for a different position, maybe county commissioner, maybe state representative, state senator. I hear that there's not too many qualifications required to run for governor, for Secretary of State, or for Attorney General, so could run for those positions, too. Under MCR 3.302, this court, meaning the circuit court, has the power to issue writs of superintending control over the lower courts of those courts or tribunals that are violating clear legal duties, which I provided per the charter that they had a legal duty, "shall." They did not do it. And if the plaintiff appellants have no adequate legal remedies other than the writs sought, through the city of Warren clerk and the city of Warren Election Commission have violated to satisfy the conditions of their duties in the city of Warren charter, they have deprived the plaintiff appellate of my due process and liberty, which is provided under the Fourth Amendment of the Constitution.